So could everyone please stand for the pledge? Kerry, John is going to be zooming in, but I don't know if he's on yet. And Dale Colton is excused tonight. So do we have any changes to the agenda?
The agenda has not changed since early this afternoon. So no, we do not have any changes.
And I need a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Barb, second by Sue. Are there any questions? All in favor? I. Opposed? Abstain, motion carried. And Kerry's not on yet, as I see. Can you let me know when Kerry gets on, just so we know to get a thumbs up from him? And next, we need a motion to go into executive session to review the letter of resignation from a board member. We need a motion. Motion by Sue, second by Barb. All in favor? I. Opposed? Abstain, motion carried. And we. Very quickly. Lot of executive session. Motion by Barb, second by Brad. All in favor? I.
Hi.
Kerry's yes, opposed, abstain, motion carried.
So Janet, just for the record, Mr. John did join us in executive session as we walked into the other room. So. I'm not quite exactly sure what time it is. So a minute after we adjourned.
Okay. All right. And so we're going to go on to our.
Nope. We're good.
Yes. Our capital improvements.
So at this point in time, I would like to introduce Jeff Klotzer from Stiegelt Snyder. Our architects that are assisting us with the completion of phase three construction. So Jeff, take it away.
All right. Jeff Klutzner, Stiegelt Snyder Architecture. Did a remote presentation or update a couple of months back to the board on our progress. Today I'm here to give the next update on what we've been working on and keep the board up to speed on the design team's progress. So. We've been working on. Prospect addition renovations, high school renovations, the administration addition, the high school track and field. We've been doing some programming and initial design on athletic support buildings. And we did some very, very early, early childhood programming and conceptual planning. Okay, I'm going to start with Prospect Elementary. This one. Is kind of just a brief update, just to kind of tell you what we're up to speed on. The design hasn't changed much since we've last talked. Off the front of the building, we're anticipating a classroom, a small classroom addition, which will support a steam classroom. And a Seneca language and cultural space that's shown here in yellow. We have a purposeful play space, which is going to be geared towards all students where they can come in and do different activities with objects. Lego wall, for example, and different activities that kind of support learning. It's a new initiative with the state education department. And then lastly, there's going to be support space for math and English and different pullout subjects. Which are currently spread out in classrooms and taking up. Space that could be used for actual classrooms instead of and switch to smaller learning spaces. This is just a blow up of the addition, give you a little better feel how that's going to work right off the end of the building. It's going to attach right to the corridor and actually works really well on the front of the building because it's going to actually hopefully impact the look of the building. In a good way. Our interior design team is just preparing presentations now. So you guys are actually seeing this first. For interior design for all the different spaces, the purposeful play spaces at the top. Where we're trying to do some interesting stuff with the ceilings and storage to accommodate different bins. For different activities that they'll want to do with the seat with the students. This has all been done in conjunction with reaching out to the principal and kind of understanding her vision for the space. And we're just kind of getting to the point where we're ready to present that back to their team. On the bottom is this just the start of the Seneca Room, Seneca Cultural Space. Where we're starting again, just starting to think about finishes and cabinetry and how that space is going to lay out with ceilings and lighting. On the top here, we see the steam room, some exploration that the interior designers are working on. And on the bottom is the student support services. So you kind of see in that fire image on the bottom. A row of doors, those are all individual pullout spaces where we can do math and English and different subjects with or kind of individualized. Learning with the students. Please stop me at any point if I talk too fast. I'm sorry. I don't want to take up, I want to keep this efficient for you guys so you can ask questions. In this image on the left, we see actually the addition. So that's the Seneca Cultural Space and the steam space with the large windows. And then the, this image shows it better across the front of connecting the addition to the existing building, which is on this side. Is a trellis type. Design where we introduce different. Materials and colors, again, trying to make it a little more exciting as an elementary school. Any questions on prospects so far? Just so in terms of timeline too, right now we're in what's called construction documents. So we're really starting to look at the details and we're going to. Meet with that building very soon, hopefully right when school starts, once they get their students back and get a point where they're ready to meet with us, we're going to reach out. Okay, at the high school, a lot of our time has been dedicated to the admin, admin building or admin addition planning. Just I'm not going to go through these. I went through these last time. I'll skip to where we are today. But on the screen, there's four different ideas that we've worked, went through with all the team here and admin. So we've had, we had quite a few ideas that we've gone through. A lot of them have been based on proximity of staff. Where they should be to, you know, related to each other, how different departments function, which departments get more visitors, which departments need more nor more privacy. So a lot of the diagrams are this simple where we're just basically outlining a department and moving them around to kind of see where they might work. Our side here of the screen is a one story concept that we developed that. Really started to address all the future positions that could be in the district and also accommodate more flex space. And on the other side of the screen is a two story concept. These are really identical in square footage, but one's a two story, one's a one story. And we did a lot of discussion with the admin team and their support staff on these and talked about. How they communicate with each other, how you go between different departments, who works together with with each other. And ultimately, there seems to be a. Towards the one story concept predominantly just because the interaction of departments. And it really has zero impact on the green space in terms of tennis courts or anything else if. Where it needs to fit into on the building. So we, on the one story concept, we kind of pushed that a little further. She played with the shape a little bit to make it more interesting because it's be right on the front of the building. And also it creates more exciting spaces inside. What we're seeing on the far side there is everything in blue is. Or a dedicated space that someone uses. In yellow is space. We got small conference rooms, big conference rooms, shared spaces, shared storage spaces. And that's really the spine of the building. And then off the two sides are all, all the. And we tried to position all the. Next to each other that make the most sense. Very preliminary overhead views of how it fits right up into the building, which would be right over here off of where admin is today. No, I want to go back. I'm sorry. Go back one skipped. Or. Okay. Oh, I wanted to point out here and I meant to, I'm sorry. Up here, we're also. Have our interior design department, our whole design department, working on the Native American Services space. Which will essentially be the entire former administration piece of the building. So up in pink there. I'll even extend it all the way down. We're looking at how that piece interacts with the rest of it, you know. Can they'll enter at the addition and they can enter right into the Native American Services suite. And it's that that design is moving along as well as we're starting to think about programming and how that space can be developed. And I think the more important lies here is there's a good connection between the high school, the Native American Services and the admin. All kind of on that same spine here and entrance, which I think is going to set up really nicely for the. Here we're just seeing a long clear story skylight that's going to bring natural light into all the shared spaces. First images of the entrance. This entrance here will be right off the end where admin is now. That will take us into the addition where admin is at and then which will be to the right. Once you enter into the left would be the Native American. Services suite, which is all into. The high school. So all of our connections that we need between the buildings. What we're seeing here is a kind of a red. And canopy with a column. What we're trying to do here is introduce some of the red that we're seeing. Building now on your last edition onto the front of the building and starting to tie things together. This is from the. Just another view, we see the clear story at the top that I pointed out in the previous slide. And then we see that entrance here and that entrance is its own dedicated entrance. Someone comes to admin, they're no longer walking through the school. Where it's our, they go right to admin and they go right out. And we're thinking about security and how those things function. Let me go back. Yep. I'm going to go. Yeah, yeah. So what? I'm going to go previous here. Let me go to this one first. So. I know exactly what you're talking about. So we have our right here, we have our, I'll call it the teal strip that everyone keeps talking about. The one thing we talked about with the design team and with your, your staff here and administration here is. You know, not only is it teal, the facade is just super flat, you know, so you come in and it's just this flat facade all the way down, flat facade all, all the way in the other direction. And honestly, if someone designed that today, they'd probably have a little more depth to it. So what we're seeing here, it's very hard to see in this image, but you'll see it in the next image. Is we have our, our van. And what we're suggesting is to carry that red, but also to pop it out and it's not going to be really a canopy, but to just give it a little shadow and depth. That starts to show in the next image. This is just a quick idea of what to do at the senior high school entrance down here and start to do at all the entrances around the building. And to bring them to get, make them look more modern, you know, something, you know, 2020 ish, I would call it. So the red canopy over on this side, and then so we're just putting that, we're taking the teal down, we'd make that red. And then over here, this is an example of what that canopy at the high school could look like. So right now we have that barrel vault, I'll call it. We could take that down and make it much more exciting. One of the discussions, actually someone brought up in the meeting was where we're showing the warrior logo could instead that be a series of images. You know, again, bringing more life and kind of a, you know, something where maybe in the fall, it's one set of images, maybe in the spring it changes. And that's something that your district can do right on site, which is really exciting, change those out. So that's something we're looking at too, how they incorporate that. And then I think most of you probably know in that corner, we have kind of a service entrance going on. So you got, you know, trucks bringing stuff in, coming out. So this also screens out a little bit. So Kenny, when you pull in. From a distance, you're really going to see this and a little probably strip of light underneath it. So if there's an evening, evening event, you'd see that lit up, that entrance lit in the red lit up. So we're pretty excited about this. We're still working on it. What you're getting here is kind of a live update. Any questions on this or keep going? Okay. All right. Okay, athletic fields. A lot. Progress since last time, because I did talk about athletic fields last time. What we've been doing is looking at obviously at the existing setup. We've been pushing on, you know, how to make the eight lane track fit. We've been pushing on, you know, which events we're going to be able to put on the site. We're looking at parking. And that really comes together on this image where we're taking different things and moving them around. So our team at CHA in my office are working together to fit everything in. One of the things that's kind of been a key point of discussion is support buildings. How does support buildings work? Okay, so we need potentially we locker rooms for athletes. We need restrooms for spectators. We need concessions for spectators. We need parking. So those are all things we've been talking about and one concept conceptually would be to take a piece of the bus garage and put. Athlete locker rooms over there. So they're on one end of the field and then actually down here, we see, I'll come right back to the mic. Number 23, we see some potential parking and then we're also thinking about where does that spectator. Concessions and spectator toilet rooms, where do those things happen? So one thing we started to look at was the Greer building. It's pretty ugly right now. Everybody knows. But it does have a great structure. It has a slab, it has concrete CMU walls. It has electric, it has water, it has a lot of the things we need, but it's ugly. So we started to look at ideas of how to fix that up. And that is here. So bottom corner is the Greer building as you see it right now from this position on the track, you're kind of looking over at it. So our thought would be to actually just rip the roof off. It's all just wood and shingles, take that off. We put a new roof on top of the CMU walls and then we would propose to put metal panel. Around that existing CMU to just cover it up. And we're even doing things like reusing the overhead door location for concessions. And what we're proposing here in this image would be to have maybe like a 10 foot deep. Upper mezzanine level. So if parents were, were there watching something and they want to be out of the, they want to be in the shade or they want to be in an area and kind of overlook the field. That that would allow for that instead of just being in the spectator stands. In this image, we're also showing, you know, we're trying to, we're looking at athletic design, you know, what, what makes us, you know, make this look athletic. So it's really the use of materials. We showed some of your athlete images along the top in the back of that mezzanine, which we thought would look really nice. Again, something you can do onsite yourself. So we think at this point in time that we could pull something off like this, which looks really exciting by saving the CMU. Saving, you know, using the existing water, electric sewer, saving the slab. And still do this within the budget of building something new that's further over. Okay, so. We don't want to do this and do this more expensive than what we could build something new. But we think, you know, between some of the ideas here and transferring budget from building something new, this, this could be an exciting opportunity. And this is what it looks like from the street. So at the street, you're going to have cars coming by, parking, coming into events. What does it look like? This is one idea. Again, we got the backside of the roof. Again, it will just cover up the CMU. Right now we have a few doors there, overhead doors. We wouldn't need any doors on the side for anything. So, you know, maybe the long warriors with the logo kind of. Make it exciting as you enter the facility, you know, for you, for both the home people and the visitors, you know, maybe you try to intimidate them a little bit. With your nice facilities. So that's where we are on the design on Greer right now. Anything on Greer? Good? Feel free. For any, any questions or any input you want to provide. The next couple of slides are very, very preliminary. We just did. Literally a couple of day exercise of saying, you know, if we did an early, early childhood addition of prospect, how could it fit on the building? We met quickly and talked about, you know, how many classrooms do we need? What support space do we need? You know, how, where would an entrance go? What, what additional rooms do they need that maybe are not in the elementary school? Just very simple diagrams. One idea here would be to put. Classroom addition right where the existing playground is, we could reuse the playground equipment and move it over to the gym side. One reason this works is because it would be right off the existing loop. Which would be great for dropping off little ones and they could go right into their classrooms and right out of the classrooms. Drop off times would probably be staggered with the regular elementary students. So there's a lot of reasons why this works. We do have to, I know the playground was recently upgraded, but all that equipment could be probably moved over to our softball side, I'll call it. Of the field or of the site. And then this would be the elementary side or the early childhood side. Other option would be kind of at the other side and kind of wrap it next to the gym. Just doesn't work as well because we got to connect into the building. Our last one connected in really nicely to the end quarter. This one, we kind of. Got to push it a little bit, but we can make it work if this was something that people liked. And then the last option is. A different, a different approach. We put the addition on this side of the building still, but we do two stories. And we make that all elementary level classrooms. And then on where I show all the yellow classrooms in the back two fingers there, we would put the early childhood classrooms back there. All on the first story, all those rooms already have toilet rooms in them. So that's great for the little ones. So there's a lot of reasons we could consider this as well. And this has a smaller impact on our site by going two stories and doing a two story classroom addition to accommodate for. You know, pushing the early childhood into the building. I'll call it the two end fingers there. And this would allow for all of our elementary classrooms to be in one L, if you will, which would. I would say modify. I don't think we'd have to move it. I think we'd have to modify it. The only reason we might want to consider moving it is because it's going to be right out, it is already, but it'd be right outside all those classroom windows. Which kind of is a little bit of distraction. If the, if the softball was to move in the future up to the high school. That end of the building, you have your gym already and it's kind of obscured. So you could go out of the playground, come back in. The ultimate best location for a playground on this site, I think with all these concepts is probably on the other side. Which we don't have to move it here. I think we can modify it, but ultimately you might want to move it.
Hey, everyone, can I just add, if you're speaking, please use your mics.
Sorry. Oh, I'm good. Okay. All right. I hope, I hope I didn't talk way too fast. I was just trying to give you a really good update of where we are right now. Like I said, we have a lot of different activities. We're kind of focuses focusing on. We have my office, Stiegelt Center Architecture, leading the architecture side of things. We have LaBella on the engineering side and we got CHA on the sports. So we got a lot of people moving on different things. And, you know, we're, we're excited about all the ideas. And of course, we know there's stuff that wants to happen next summer. So our, our architects are focused on that as well, making sure they're getting everything drawn. So that we can see shovels in the ground next summer on the Prospect Edition and possibly some stuff here at the high school. So that's where we are today.
Does anyone have any questions? All right. Well, thank you.
Hold on, I don't have any questions, just a couple of comments. This is the first time I've seen, seen these concepts. And honestly, I'm actually excited. It's, it's good to see a refreshing new take on what our high school could look like. I really like that red. And I really like the, the new senior high entrance. That was, that's a pretty interesting proposal. I just want to say good work so far and look forward to talking about this further.
Thank you. Thank, thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And next we have the code of conduct.
Oh, we're transitioning over with Mrs. Brown to get the PowerPoint up. I would like to acknowledge the, the efforts of the students who were able to participate. At the high school level in June and even a session or two over the summer. Mrs. Lynn McGarrah, High School Assistant Principal. Mrs. Laura Hadara and Mrs. Janos Bowen, who are working in their administrative internship capacity. And the parents and the board members who also offered some additional commentary to this. Do we have the PowerPoint up, Marcy or? The code of conduct? Yep. That's okay. So the individuals met and chatted about the code of conduct and one of the. Few areas of concern was the dress code. And as the students came forward with more commentary about the dress code and their perceptions of the dress code. It actually led to a very robust conversation about equity and conversation. And part of that was spearheaded by Justin Chap. Our Equity Officer for the district. So there have been many hands at work in the creation of a revised code of conduct. With that said, I will state it's not perfect. It's going to change and evolve. For those who've been around for enough revisions to the code of conduct. You may have recalled not that many years ago where the latest and greatest interference to public education was laser pointers. Or spigot spinners. Things change. Student focuses and priorities change. But what shouldn't change within the code of conduct is the expectations of conduct in school. By everyone who comes into our building. So as we look at the code of conduct. It's built on the premise and the foundation of listening and treating people with respect. Resolving problems before they become big problems and understanding that as a primary mission. Our objective as a school is to create opportunities for teaching, learning and growth. And that's where this code of conduct is, tries to be rooted in. Marcy, if you could just advance it, please. So just as a quick tutorial, the code needs to be annually adopted. It must be shared with all of the parties, including a forum like this evening. And revisions can occur essentially at any time. If we agree with those revisions and then we hold a public forum and then readopt the code. It's very possible that over the course of the 21, 22 school year. That students and staff and parents and administrators will sit down and say, here are some revisions that we would like to address. So later in the agenda is a full version of the completed proposed code of conduct that I am recommending be approved this evening. And I want to highlight some of the major changes. So if we can advance it. Obviously, as I noted, the primary concern of many of the students was a perception of being dress coded. And that individuals were being identified simply because of the clothing that they were wearing that they felt was appropriate. And that they felt comfortable in, given their age, given their socioeconomic status, given their. given their socioeconomic status, given their high school spiritness. And part of those conversations led to a better understanding of the attire. The graphic is a new graphic and it's a little hard to see, but basically it covers all of the important parts that we felt as a staff, as administration and as students, students and staff and guests should be properly attired in school. Obviously, in certain circumstances like the pool, this may look different. We don't want students with shoes on in the pool. Similarly, if students are in a shop type class or a welding or uh, hydrostatic electric dip in the um, steam addition, we want to make sure that safety and appropriate function is um, always a primary rule to promote safety. So the students gave a significant amount of input into the code of what they expected and what staff expected would be both negotiables moving forward and non-negotiables that would either interfere with instruction or cause the student some distress. We obviously don't want students walking around in bikinis or um, um, uh, swimming attire in the classrooms unless it's a physical education setting. And we want students to be appropriately attired and staff appropriately attired for the business at hand of teaching, learning and instructing. One of the other elements that we talked about was there was some language in the document that needed to be clarified, specifically with regard to controlled substances, electronic cigarettes and things that 10 years ago just simply didn't exist. So part of that controlled substance piece is an update of language as things evolve and change. One of the other elements that um, the, the team working on clarified what a disruptive student might look like or disruptive influence might look like. Um, certainly that doesn't discount a significant behavioral concern that may occur as a result of some other stressor. And students can accelerate through that or not accelerate through it, but it does help to clarify what that looks like in terms of the legal standards that are necessary in enforcing school conduct and expectations. Uh, there were some minor formatting changes with interim alternate educational settings. The context of that language was not changed, but there were some formatting issues to make it flow a little bit better. We also adjusted um, the section on illegal drugs. That section was expanded as different influences come into school settings or different um, influences may be prevalent in the community. We don't necessarily have that influence on a, on a basis in our schools to any frequency, but as long as we were cleaning the document up, we wanted to touch it while we were there and update it. We also expanded the term principal, which previously simply meant a high school principal. And obviously there are different staff in an administrative capacity in the district. And so principal is interchangeable with school administrator and supervisors. And of course, uh, one of the major concerns of our students was the identification and the consistent language used to identify protected classes, whether it's socioeconomic, religious, um, gender or orientation wise. We wanted to make sure the language was inclusive. The last element that I'll talk uh, just briefly about with some of the changes regarding um, alterations uh, included an expansion of the definition of terms. Uh, one of the things that we had previously talked about as a committee and as a group of adults and students was in looking at other codes of conducts, our section on definition was rather narrow. So the students and the staff involved expanded that definition. They added definitions and they clarified some definitions, which everyone felt a little bit more comfortable with to try to be more inclusive. And that was one of the major elements that we found is that the document had been updated in a somewhat punitive sense about the things that can't be done, shouldn't be done. And it took a little bit of a harsher tone towards students. After some conversations and some deeper reflection, we tried to soften some of that language, not to erode the expectations, but to keep the document positively focused and reinforce positive expected behaviors rather than take a punitive viewpoint. That seemed to resonate pretty well with the students. They felt more comfortable with it. Uh, and again, um, part of our process was to have the students have a better voice in the code of conduct while still maintaining the structure that we need to operate the school district and that the teachers and the administrators felt comfortable with. Just a few other minor parts of, of clarifying some of the formatting with IAES or some, uh, if you can just go back, Marcy, one second. Yep, is regarding the school functions. Um, we found that there were some elements of what we now do in school, locations, venues, modes of transportation that were absent from the document. So to be more uh, inclusive and expansive of possible areas that could be of concern, uh, those definitions were expanded. We clarified the language on suspensions uh, and updated that. And there was some redundancies with regard to uh, language on weapons. My guess over time, as it grew and evolved, more was added and it wasn't pruned to be reflective and internally consistent as a document. And in some cases, the language a li- was a little unclear. Um, and so we tried to clean that up. And Marcy, if you can advance. Um, a few other minor adjustments, as I had mentioned, was to make the document less negative and uh, rather than consequences, uh, focus in on expectations and to clarify communication protocols. What should happen, particularly in the area of dress code, if there is a potential violation or potential concern? It's fundamentally rooted and grounded in individual conversations. And that will be a topic of conversation that we'll have administratively with staff, what to do if a student or a staff member or a visitor on campus is acting in a way that's incongruent with our expectations. And if we can advance, Marcy? So again, um, clarified the expectations, made it less punitive, align interventions and goals with instruction and learning, more interactive rather than dictatorial, although there is clearly still some statutory requirements of this document. I think last count, there were 27 requirements to this plan. I believe this covers all 27 in a way that's more inclusive and appropriate uh, and less punitive. It does further define attire and quite frankly, we'll probably need to revisit this again at a later date with staff and with students. We have discussed possibly a slice group of students to take a deeper dive into things that um, may still be a concern with either students, staff or faculty. And we did add the graphic, which is not drawn to scale or to meant to be totally inclusive of everything, but to give everyone a ballpark idea of what we're talking about in terms of attire. And I think there's one more slide. Two other category, or a few other categories is we did provide some clarity about expectations for remote learning and expectations while doing uh, digital or uh, uh, instruction that doesn't occur in person. Uh, we did clarify language and update on digital images and pictures. It has been a longstanding part of our code that you cannot take a digital image of someone without their express permission. And we did expand that uh, and to provide some clarification, not just digital images, but also any other recording for students. And we did to the extent that we think cover all the pronoun changes to be more inclusive. I won't say that that's a hundred percent, but that was the effort. And so if there are some others in there, we'll make notations of that. And um, at a later date, if necessary, uh, continue to make those adjustments. Uh, is, I think that might be it, right, Marcy? Okay, so those are the questions, uh, or those are what we attempted to answer the questions from the students and from faculty and from staff and from board members regarding updating the code. Uh, again, we can revise this at a later date if there is such a need and inquiry to do so. But uh, later in the agenda, I am recommending that we do approve the code so we can actually get it to print.
Hey, does anyone have any questions for Bob? All right, then we'll move on to the school safety and reopening presentation.
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Wright. Uh, let's see, over the past week, school districts across New York have received guidance documents to prescribe how school will look in September. Uh, the current guidance requires three feet of social distancing for students and universal mask wearing for adults and for students who are closer than six feet in distance. Um, and what that basically means is that um, if you are on campus, uh, whether you are an adult who is vaccinated, unvaccinated, a student who is vaccinated or unvaccinated is that you will be required to wear a mask while indoors. Students who are outdoors will not be required to wear a mask. Um, additionally, over the past several weeks, our schools have been in contact with families to determine the desire and need for complete virtual instruction. Nine families, um, which total 12 students have indicated they wish to receive instruction off campus. We intend to provide this instruction through an e-Academy collaboration with local districts that will look significantly different than instruction did um, throughout the past year. Um, that will be on average six to six and a half hours a day. It will be synchronous. Um, a lot of the um, sort of waivers and um, permissions for reduced seat time for classes has been eliminated, so school will look a lot more like school heads uh, did pre-pandemic for both students on campus and off campus. While we will provide the virtual instruction to the small number of families who have requested it, we have heard from the vast majority of parents and students, the need for five-day-a-week instruction in our schools, and that's what we intend to provide. This instruction will uh, follow a traditional school day, not a shortened day like the past year. At this point, all after-school enrichment and athletics are planned to be operating in sort of a pre-pandemic model, but will be following the distancing and mask-wearing protocols. Um, while we're hearing on the news um, and seeing some numbers about increases in transmission rates, our safety department and the school leaders have become very good at monitoring our community infection rates, including the actual number of positive COVID individuals in our portion of Kent County, throughout the county at large, as well as in our neighboring counties. If the guidance changes or if infection rates become concerning, we will change our operating procedures to ensure the safety of our students and staff. As we've said in the past, the students and staff safety is our utmost concern. So to summarize, we will be providing virtual instruction for those individuals who request it. And for on-campus students, we will be following essentially a pre-pandemic model, but we will be maintaining the three feet of social distance with universal mask-wearing. Um, and there will of course be opportunities for mask breaks.
Our start and end times for each of the schools?
I should be prepared to answer that question, but I'm totally not. Um, I would say around 7:30 or 8:00 and they will end around uh, 2:30 or 3:00 to 3:15.
So back to where they were.
They're pretty much back exactly where they were um, before the pandemic started.
Okay.
I'm sure I'll get a text here in the next five minutes telling me what I didn't know. So yes, thank you.
So Dr. Beeler, if I can put you on the spot here, we'll do a little lightning round.
Doing well on the spot.
All right, you ready?
Yes.
If I'm a student and I'm outside, may I wear a mask if I choose to?
Of course, anyone can wear a mask at any point in time. Um, the, and that's particularly important for students who are outside. Um, if people feel more comfortable wearing a mask outside, they're absolutely encouraged to do so.
Perfect, okay. Second lightning round question. Will the district host vaccination clinics?
Yes, the district will be hosting vaccination clinics. We did in the past and we anticipate doing so in the future. Um, I would anticipate so. I think the first round of boosters um, is anticipated to be approved in October. So we don't necessarily have too much guidance on that, but I anticipate that if we can contribute to the vaccination um, of our community, then we will do so.
And I think the last lightning round question, do we have enough bus drivers to transport all of our students?
That's a terrific question. As of very recently this afternoon, we do have enough bus drivers to um, transport all of our students. Um, and that I would say is in large part um, a credit to the school board, providing the opportunity to um, provide sort of that signing bonus that we had discussed in the Personnel Committee, um, as well as the, our bus drivers themselves, recruiting um, colleagues and speaking. Um, I'd like to think highly of the district and our, our current transportation department, um, which has attracted drivers actually from other districts and other professions. All right.
Beeler.
You are welcome, Mr. Bernstein.
I'll have any questions for Dr. Beeler? Did you do your mics?
So the question um, from Ms. Frye's was uh, are any stu- or schools talking with us about the plans and whatnot? Or about busing?
About busing.
Um, I haven't heard too much about busing.
Only that, um, we, we had a meeting today and uh, safety on transportation was the topic. Not so much bus driver shortage. Channel two has done a great uh, series on uh, the district in transportation last week. And again, there was on uh, WGRZ Daybreak today, there was a really nice lengthy two segments on Niagara Wheatfield and Salamanca. Uh, so we actually did get some queries from other drivers as a result of that as today. So that's our, part of our outreach is working to attract other drivers, but it is an issue across Western New York and across the country for drivers.
Any other questions? Then we will move on to communications. And I'd see Jess Cross is on for Title Six.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Short and sweet tonight. Title Six meeting August 25th, 7:00 PM in the very room that you all are sitting in, the large group instruction room, Salamanca High School. That is all, thank you.
August 25th at 7:00 PM in the LGI, correct?
That is right, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Jess. You have.
No other speakers.
No other speakers. All right. Then we will move on to central office message. So we'll start with Dr. Beeler.
Well, it just so happens that the start times have arrived. So the uh, bus times uh, for Prospect Elementary School is that they will arrive at Prospect between 8:20 and 8:30 at Seneca Intermediate and the high school between 7:35 and 7:45. Um, the school day for Prospect Elementary School is from 8:35 to 3:20 and for Seneca Intermediate and the high school from 8:00 AM to 3:15. I believe that is identical to the time that it would have been two years ago.
Thank you.
Uh, other than that, um, we're all set. We're excited to um, start to see uh, more teachers um, and staff on campus, although there were an awful lot that were on campus over the summer with the professional development. Um, but we are looking forward to uh, having students back in our buildings and our buildings become schools again.
Thank you. How about from Karen?
No, I'm good tonight, thank you.
We will move on to the Board of Education. How about if we start with Barb?
I just want to thank Meg for her three years of service to the board and wish her well in her new job. And I'm looking forward to the start of the new school year. It's always very exciting.
Brad?
Awesome.
Nick and I started together.
I think I heard something. I lost audio there for a few minutes. I don't know what's going on. I thought I heard my name, though.
I didn't know if you had anything for uh,
I didn't know if you had anything for Board of Education message.
Yeah, I don't know if my connection isn't the greatest or what's going on here, but getting bits and pieces. If you asked about board message, I guess I'll pass because I don't know how well this is coming through.
Oh, you might be us too well, but we can hear you just fine. All right, then. I also am just going to reiterate that, you know, Maggie is going to be missed and she's got to fill on the board because she was such a great asset to the board. And, you know, of course, we all wish her well. And citing that we are hopefully finally going to get students back in the building, back to a normal school year, knock on wood if we can make sure that our numbers stay in under control. And again, I'm just gonna gonna do the plug that if you're not vaccinated, please go get vaccinated because if everyone is vaccinated, it's gonna stop the spread of this awful disease of it. And it's just really important that people understand that. Again, it's not political. It's just common sense. It helps the more people that are vaccinated. And I did see something come out that said boosters after eight months. So keep, you know, informed. And if you need to get a booster shot, you know, please make sure that you're doing that so that everyone can stay safe during this pandemic. And that's really all I have tonight. Bob? So I have a few items for us tonight. So thank you, everyone, for coming. Thank you to Jeff and Mark for the presentations. It's very helpful in putting into context some of the important work we're doing. Later this evening in tonight's agenda, we will, as a Board of Education, accept with regret the resignation of Dr. Megan McKeon as a member of our Board of Education. As a result of the resignation, the board and the community has essentially three options to fill the vacancy. The first option is to leave the board seat vacant until the regular election on May seventeenth of twenty twenty-two, where the winner of that seat would then serve the remainder of Dr. McKeon's term of two years. Or option two, schedule a special election sometime before May seventeenth, and the winner of that special election would then serve the remainder of Dr. McKeon's term. Or option three, advertise for interested community members to apply for consideration to the board to serve the remaining portion of Dr. McKeon's time until May. At that time, the individual that the Board of Education would select would still need to run for election to fill the remaining portion of Dr. McKeon's time. However, the Board of Education, through a process, would have the ability to accept interested individuals' credentials and then consider their qualifications. The Board of Education would therefore like to suggest that individuals who are interested should submit a letter to Janet Cook, District Clerk, for consideration at fifty Iroquois Drive, Salamanca, by September first. Following that date, the board will reassess the number of interested candidates in the process moving forward to fill Dr. McKeon's seat. If you have any questions, you can contact Mrs. Ray, Board President, Mr. John, Board Vice President, or Janet Cook, District Clerk. If you contact me, I will refer you to one of those three individuals, simply because this is a board function, not an operations function. And technically, the board is my boss. So if you have questions, please reach out to those individuals. And if you do get me, I will make sure you get to the right person. On a secondary note, New Teacher Academy is Monday and Tuesday of next week. It's actually New Staff Academy because we have a lot of people joining us. Mrs. Beatty, what is the total count up to? Do you know? Close to forty new staff members that are joining us, and some are veterans, assuming new positions. So we have a big freshman class of twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, joining us. Also on Monday, the twenty-third, at the casino, is our third COVID-int erupted annual Bus Rodeo, where we have an obstacle course challenge with administrators and our bus drivers and staff and representatives from the Seneca Nation and the Casino Gaming Corporation will be testing out their bus driving expertise. I'm not sure, Dr. Beeler, the last time we did this, who was the winner for the district staff, not bus driver related? Might you know?
I'm pretty sure I had the fastest time.
That wasn't the question, though.
Um, all right.
I know it pains you to say that I was the winner, but Mark was correct. He did finish in record time. He actually finished before he started. That's how fast he may have been going.
That's right.
That's at the casino. And I do want to thank Bob Finch and the entire Transportation Department for organizing this. This is truly something that has helped us as administrators understand how important transportation is and getting all of our students and spectators and riders from point A to point B safely. So kudos to the Transportation Department. And just a real quick comment, we had a very productive meeting with the city and the Library Board today about our ongoing collaborations. We are moving along and will continue to update on that progress. We are planning on meeting right after the students return on September first. So sometime that first week or second week of September for another meeting. And lastly, I'll just say that at this time of year, and I appreciate the board's patience and Janet's patience today and yesterday and over the weekend and Friday, as we tried to put together this monster agenda to make sure that we had as many staff positions filled as we could humanly fill. It takes a lot of effort to get these kind of agendas done in a very tight timeframe and still allowing some staff some precious vacation time because it's been a rough long eighteen months. And every year I say this, it's a frantic, crazy, breakneck speed pace. And then somehow magically, everything falls into place and voila, things are open and ready to go. That's simply because we have an amazing staff in the buildings, in buildings and grounds, in maintenance, in transportation, administratively, clerically, all of the teachers that have done P D. Over the summer, all of the teachers and staff and parents and students who've helped interview a very large incoming class of teachers and somehow magically it just all happens. And we are looking forward to our opening day of staff at nine thirty A M. On August twenty-fifth, we will start here in the auditorium at nine thirty. If any board members are available to come, please join us. Mrs. Ray, if you're able to join us, or Mr. John for some opening comments, or any board member for opening comments, please join us at nine thirty. And I'll just say we have a few surprises up our sleeves. Yeah, oh, boy. Yeah. So on the twenty-fifth, and then on the twenty-sixth, staff will be with their buildings and their departments all day. Thank you. All right, then we will move on to the consent agenda. So I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Sue. Second by Barb. Are there any questions on the consent agenda? All in favor? I. Opposed? Carrie, you got a thumbs up?
Oh, I approve.
Okay. Opposed, abstain, motion carried. Under our old business, we have policies thirty-four twenty, thirty-four twenty-one, and just we haven't given an impetus and significant relationship policy a number yet. Policies will code that once it's approved. Okay, so we need a motion to approve those policies. Motion by Brad. Second by Sue. Are there any questions on any of the policies? All in favor? I. Did Carrie say yes?
I approve.
Opposed? Abstain, motion carried. And then we have our new business. We have our tax warrant for twenty twenty-one. So we need a motion to approve the tax warrant in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand. Motion by Barb. Second by Brad. Are there any questions on the tax warrant? All in favor? I.
I.
Opposed? Abstain, motion carried. Item B is our budget transfer. So we need a motion to approve the final budget transfer for twenty twenty-one. Motion by Brad. Second by Barb. Are there any questions on the final transfers? All in favor? I.
I.
Opposed? Abstain, motion carried. Item C is our change orders and allowance dispersments, my favorite. So we, not many, and there's actually a credit. So we need a motion to approve the change orders and allowance dispersments. Motion by Barb. Carrie seconded, okay.
Carrie will second.
Carrie seconded. Do we have any questions? All in favor? I.
I.
Opposed? Abstain, motion carried. Item D is the Code of Conduct for twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. So we need a motion to approve the Code of Conduct. Motion by Sue. Second by Brad. Do we have any questions on the Code of Conduct? All in favor? I.
I.
Opposed? Abstain, motion carried. Item E is to create and abolish and reclassify some positions. So we need a motion to create and abolish positions that were listed above in the agenda. And reclassify, sorry. That's all right. Motion by Brad. Second by Sue. Are there any questions on any of the items? All in favor? I.
I.
Opposed? Abstain, motion carried. Item F is our S T A memorandum of agreement per statement of continued eligibility. So we need a motion to approve yes, T A, M O A. Motion by Sue. Second by Brad. Are there any questions? All in favor? I.
I.
Opposed? Abstain, motion carried. Item G is our M O A for SASSA. So we need a motion to approve the SASSA M O A. Motion by Barb. Second by Brad. Are there any questions? All in favor? I.
I.
Opposed? Abstain, motion carried. Item H is our organizational chart. So we need a motion to approve the org chart. Motion by Sue. Second by Barb. Are there any questions? All in favor? I.
I.
Opposed? Abstain, motion carried. Item nine is our personnel consent agenda, which is very lengthy. So we need to move on and we need a motion to approve Consent Agenda nine A. Motion by Barb. Second by Brad. Are there any questions on any of the items in the consent agenda under nine A? All in favor? I.
I.
Opposed? Abstain, motion carried. Personnel consent agenda number two. We need a motion to approve the Personnel Consent Agenda number two. Motion by Barb. Motion by Barb, second by Carrie?
Yeah.
Are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
So Barb, Brad, Sue, Carrie are all yes. Any opposed? I will abstain. Motion carried. And item E, we will introduce the newly appointed staff. So we have have a few individuals joining us. So I'm going to jump in and I know that some of our administrators are taking some much needed time off, but I will introduce one of our teaching assistants, Carrie Kennedy, who's on the line. Carrie is currently in a, in the district, working as a security guard and is joining us as a teacher assistant. She has been part of our Salamanca family for quite a while. And we are thrilled and delighted to have her joining us at the secondary building as a teacher assistant. So Carrie, welcome and congratulations.
Thank you.
We also have Ray Haley, who was reappointed. Or I'm sorry, Paul, who was, okay, wrong Haley. Okay. Well, Paul is joining us again as our, one of our football coaches. So we appreciate all of our community members that come out to serve in any capacity, coach or volunteer. So congratulations. Okay, we also have two of our administrators.
Just in case, I'll probably like five more minutes.
Hang on, we've got to mute. Okay, there we go. We have two individuals with us tonight that are assuming very similar roles, but slightly reclassified roles. So I'll start with Mr. Perizzi, who is being reappointed as one of our football coaches. So Jerry, thank you for that co-curricular role. We appreciate your service to our students. But we also appreciate you stepping up and assuming a greater leadership role in the district as our Director of Special Education. Taking a leadership role with some of our students and families that need additional assistance and support is tremendously appreciated. Your efforts, your hard work, your compassion for students and families that maybe have not always found school to be the most successful environment. You're building bridges with our students and our families, and we deeply appreciate you stepping up and assuming a greater leadership role for us. So congratulations, Jerry. And also Mrs. Kristen Dudek, who has been with us for almost as long as I've been in the district as our Director of Pupil Services. And as our needs change as a district, we always can count on Kristen to step in to fill that need. She is tremendously hardworking, is incredibly competent with data and all of the state reports and all of the grants. And we are delighted that Kristen is assuming a slightly revised and classified role as our Chief of Student Supports and Information. As you'll note in our reorganization charge chart, we've really made a conscientious effort for our staff and for our families to know who to go to when there is a concern in the areas of all things student services related. Kristen is truly one of the most competent and proficient individuals I've had the pleasure to work with since I've been in education since nineteen eighty-seven. So Kristen, congratulations, and thank you for serving. I think that is everyone that's on the agenda and is on Zoom. Thank you. Then we just have our board information. Oh, I'm sorry. Ding dong. Item F is our Board of Education Member Resignation. See, I just didn't want my degrees on. I guess it's what I was ignoring it. So we need to accept the resignation of Dr. Megan McKeon as of effective August sixth, twenty twenty-one. So we need motion by Sue.
as of effective August 6, 2021. So we need, motion by Sue. Second by Brad. All in favor? I?
Hold on. I had a comment here.
Okay.
Again, I'm getting spotty service, so I'm not sure how well this comes through. But, you know, this is, this is that that tough one right here. You know, everybody's already said it, we're going to miss Meg. She's going to have big shoes to fill. She was a huge champion for our district of all of our kids. You know, she was a huge champion for the minorities, you know, the underrepresented. And she's really going to be missed. I'm going to miss her. You know, this is, this is a big loss, I feel, for our board. So, yeah, we're, we're going to have some big shoes to fill with the upcoming, we look at an appointment. So I just wanted to say that honestly, I'm half tempted to vote no on this. I don't want to see her go, but even voting no isn't going to change the reality. So I just wanted to say that she is appreciated and she will be missed.
That was very well said. So we have a motion by Sue, second by Brad. All in favor? I?
I.
Opposed? Abstained, motion carried. And we do wish Meg the best of luck. And item 10 is our Board Information Reports. We did have a thank you note I saw on there.
Actually, two. So let me just pull those up real quickly. To get to them on my.
County Community Action. Actually, Janet, I do need that letter because my screen is not loading. So while we're doing that, yeah, I actually need both of them. That's weird. It says they're there. Okay. Apologize for that delay. The first one is from Cataragus County, Cataragus County Community Action from Deborah Lasky. Dear ladies and gentlemen, the Cataragus Community Action would like to take this opportunity to thank you for your kind and generous donation made to us recently. Your donation will be utilized through our emergency food pantry and the lighthouse community kitchen, which serves hot meals to the needy five evenings per week. Cataragus County, Cataragus Community Action is an anti-poverty organization dedicated to helping people and changing lives. As you may or may not know, all the donations that we have received are used to ease the conditions of poverty and violence and give new opportunities to the low-income people in Cataragus County. Thank you for your kind consideration. Very truly yours, Deborah Lasky, Central Intake Coordinator. And the second is from Chris Trapp, one of our longstanding school attorneys. Dear Ms. Ray, I wanted to take this opportunity to thank the Board for reappointing me as the Council to the Salamanca City Central School District. It has been an honor serving the district and administration over the years, and I look forward to working with everyone again this year. Thank you again. If you have any questions or if you would like to discuss anything further, please do not hesitate to contact us. Very truly yours, Chris Trapp, Greco Trapp, P L L C. And I do, I do want to also thank Chris Trapp for being one of our sponsors for the National Honor Society Golf Tournament and sponsoring a significant contribution to the Scholarship Committee, as did Stieglett Snyder Turner, A Plus Technologies, TeleMobile Medicine, and I'm missing one and I can't, was it? So our vendors are very supportive of our students, and I want to thank all of them as well as Mr. Trapp and the other sponsors. We give out annually in excess of $25,000 a year to the region to Cataragus Allegheny students, and it's because of events like the golf tournament that we're able to be so generous and supportive of students across the region. Thank you.
Great, thanks. And then just our meeting dates, upcoming events. The 25th and 26th are our welcome back picnics at 5:00. So please make sure you attend those. The 25th is Title VI at 7:00. And then the first day of school is September 1st. So that's always exciting for everyone. We have our Personnel Committee at September 2nd at 8:00 AM. And again, if you're interested in being a Board Member, please submit your letter of interest along with qualifications by September 1st. So.
I do have one other addition. Thank you, Janet, for reminding me. Board members, I'll draw your attention to the, the whiteboard over here, and we received this acknowledgement from the New York State School Boards Association, recognizing the Salamanca City Central School District Board of Education as champions of change for students, and particularly important and noteworthy is the acknowledgement of the construction, creation, and expansion of our STEAM Center of Excellence as a district that is being a champion for change for students.
It's nice to be recognized. All right, our next board meeting will be September 7th, right here at 5:30. And with that, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion by Barb. Second by Brad. All in favor? I. Thumbs up by Carrie. Opposed, abstained, motion carried. Thank you, everyone, for attending tonight.